All right, guys, it's 7:00 PM. We're gonna call this meeting to order on January 9th, 2024.
Our most gracious Father, we thank you for this gathering tonight and for the opportunity to serve our city. We pray for your guidance and for wisdom to help us do what is right and good for our city. In this new year, let us continue to put the interests of our city and citizens above our own, and may we work together for the common good as we plan for this upcoming year. Inspire us to be innovative thinkers and to help our city grow and prosper. And, Father, we ask that you bless our city staff and watch over our city crews as they work out in this oncoming cold weather. And please keep them safe as they work to keep our infrastructure operating. Bless our citizens, watch over them and us as we go about our daily lives. We ask all of these things in your son's name. Amen.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, do we have any announcements?
I'll kind of have one, but it's really not an announcement. It's just, I have a note here written down. I don't know if any of you have been watching Facebook, but on April the 8th of this year, there's gonna be a total solar eclipse. And I've been doing a little bit of research on this. They're expecting between 20,000 and 80,000 people to come visit just in our area. So I would encourage our local businesses and, you know, whoever wants to be involved in that, to start moving on that, because right now, I know Emory, Greenville, Terrell, all the cities around us are already planning things. I even saw where a city in Ohio is like, they're beefing up their security, their hospital staff, all these different things because of the influx of people that will come to see this. So just kind of keep that in your mind when we do looking forward in the future.
It's passing right over us.
Yes, we are in the path of totality.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Anybody else got any announcements? Chief, you got some? Nobody else? So I was privy to this. I'm not sure if everybody's aware of the food pantry in Quinlan, and it was taken over by a different group of folks in 2018. And they've really, really ramped that thing up. And I just wanted to make mention of it, kind of give them kudos. So they served in 2023, they served 24,263 families, right? In 2024, they expect to serve 30,000 families. Now, this all started from 2018, when they took over, they served 4,732 families. So 4732 versus 2463 of last year. That's pretty good.
Can I speak on that?
It's phenomenal. Yes, ma'am.
I volunteered there and here for 10 years, my husband as well. The reason the numbers have increased so much, besides the economy, is that the people can now come once a week. Back in 2018, they'd only come once a month.
Gotcha.
And now they're coming once a week. So we do see our numbers rise. We definitely appreciate any donations, monetary or whatever you want to bring. We also need plastic bags to put things in, like your Walmart bag or Dollar General bags. But there is a huge, huge need. We have people coming as far away as Celeste, Wolf City, it's all of Hunt County. People from Greenville come, people from Long Island come. I mean, it's just phenomenal, the number of people we serve. Most of the time, it's over 20 to 150 families a day. And that's just families. Some of them are 10 people in a family. And so if you can volunteer or contribute, the food pantry would most definitely appreciate it.
Where do you volunteer and where do you donate?
You volunteer there at the food pantry. It's right there past the post office on the right-hand side.
Right.
And they're open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday from 9:00 to noon. And then Thursday, they're closed because they get trucks from North Texas Food.
They also do a Thanksgiving and a Christmas giveaway, where they give away a full dinner and all the trimmings and everything to every family that comes through. Y'all do a great job there, Mary.
We gave out buckets this year, too.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing all that information. It makes sense, the numbers, but again, there's a lot of effort that went into being able to do it from monthly to daily.
Yes.
So I think that, you know, the gracious giving that everybody has is awesome, and I just thought that that needed to be shared. And you just gave some more information.
I'll go Roger then.
Yeah, you just gave some more information that might also help the cause. Good stuff. The other thing is, and the chief and surrounding fire departments were involved in this. Police departments, I believe, or I know they were. I think some of our police officers were up there. It was a big, it was a big deal, and I can't remember Mr. Lucas's last name off the top of my head. Chief probably doesn't either, doesn't look like. But anyway, so, you know, here we are, this little young man, I can't remember his age. I don't know if y'all seen it.
He was 77.
But it's kind of tough, you know? And I'm sharing this because I think it's something awesome that I believe Tracy Travers and his wife kind of got the ball rolling, and this thing, it started picking up all kinds of stuff along the way and grew phenomenally and gave this little boy some really cool experiences. So I just want to say thanks to everybody, you know, Tracy and his wife, and thanks to everybody that's put some effort forward to give this little boy some experiences that he never would have had, right? At the time of his life, it's really trying. So and with that said, I ask that we all count our blessings, right? So that's all I had to share. Sorry I had to take it to a sad place, but it's a great thing that what everybody's done for that little boy.
Yeah. Notice and find it a lot, too.
Yeah. No other announcements? Anyone? Nope. So we're gonna go to citizens input, which is number five on our agenda. We talked about this up here. I talked to the council, and we did not put any agenda somehow for non-agenda-related items, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna talk about the agenda-related items first for number five, and then we're gonna move straight to non-agenda-related items. I was advised that should be just fine. We should be with a reason on that. So the only agenda-related item, I believe, is Ms. Penry.
Okay, this probably should have been directed to Jim Turnipseed, who managed not to be here today. But I'll read this. Once again, our mayor is up to his old tricks. Just like Satan, he likes to do things underhandedly. He has on the agenda to discuss removing red buyers from the EDC. Please note that he never once contacted Rhett or myself as president of the EDC about why he wanted to do this, or even that he was planning to do this. The only way we knew about it was seeing it on the agenda. Asking for the removal of red buyers from the EDC is a bogus and sloppy attempt of our mayor to discredit those he doesn't like. Nothing has been done unethically or illegally to warrant removal of Rhett from our committee. But am I surprised by this being on the agenda? No. Our mayor has always been an undercover manipulator. He's a bully who uses social media and secrecy is his tools. When I was on the city council, he could call us up and test any of us who did not agree with him or did something he didn't like. And if he really got on his bad side, he would start his smirr campaign, as many of you have seen on social media, about one thing or another. Rather than stand up for our city or city council members, he joined with the naysayers to cut down anything good that might be achieved in our city. Our mayor demanded that we all sign an ethics agreement, which he did not adhere to. He didn't give the facts to even both sides of any story before he or his wife started running a social media to slant it to their advantage. Rather than stand up for our city or city council members, he tries to tear them down so he can look good. He's very manipulative in his passive-aggressive way. He wants you to believe he's this poor, poor soul that is just trying to do his best. Believe me, he's not that. What he wants to do is run off every citizen who is willing to put the time and effort into making our city better and put his crooks, criminals, and felons in their place. I'm asking you, as a city council, to not let a personal vendetta that Jim Turnipseed has against me, the EDC, our red buyers, continue. Please leave Rhett on my EDC board. It is an injustice to him to remove him from my board. Secondly, I am asking for the resignation of Jim Turnipseed as our mayor. Jim has violated several ethics of this town for his own personal gain. And on top of that, he hasn't lived in our town for the last six months that I know of. A mayor should live in the town, not just on the property.
Okay, I think that was the only one I had that was related to the agenda items, unless there's somebody out there that I'm missing a piece of paperwork. Has anybody else had something related to agenda items? Okay. This is non-related to the agenda items. Mr. Bob Roberts?
Yes, I'm here representing the MBS Post. And you've got a drawing up there. We, I checked with State by an earlier authority about getting a leaseback on this property. They turned it back over to the city of West Tawsoni. You guys have that in a leaseback agreement with them, and they left it up to the city council as to whether or not we can yet increase property. We have an area right now that we are using for parking lot that was allocated by the city council several years ago. But we would like to increase that area so we can better serve the community and increase our parking lot. Now, there's a good deal in there. We also are looking at developing an outdoor service area for outdoor events. Right now, that area is just scrubs and trash. And we would really like to get hold of it and improve it. I think it would benefit the city, the community, and the MBS as well. Now, the drawing you've got, I used convenient markers to put those lines in there. And if you'll notice, there used to be a road down through there. I did not include that in what I'm asking for, because like I said, I use convenient markers to do that. We have several fishermen that would love to be able to take their boat to the lake and go back up to the post after they go fishing. And it would reduce the traffic down on, like, the park area. It would make it more convenient for our members. I'll have to admit that. But I'm not sure the procedure of how to go about getting this from you guys. That's why I'm here tonight. So what do I need to do to officially request this?
So unfortunately, sir, during this time of our meeting, we couldn't really speak on this or banter back and forth. What you would have to do is you would have to get on our agenda. So you would come up here, talk to someone at the city hall, particularly Kim, and Angela the mayor, to get something on the agenda to discuss this, or the council to discuss and consider this.
Okay.
Reach out to Kim.
Yeah.
And she'll get a whole agenda, myself, and we can kind of narrow down what we're talking about.
Okay.
So we need to know some of the legal descriptions and stuff like that.
All right. I appreciate you today.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I have one more that's a non-agenda-related item, and it was Jane Keeler. I couldn't tell if it was a K or an H.
Keeler.
Keeler. Jane Keeler?
Mine are probably questions that I guess can't be answered, but I'm gonna post it anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wondering if there was ever any sort of a readout regarding revenue that was generated from the circus that came to town in October? And if there was revenue, where did the revenue go? Because I know there was pre-ticket sales, and then there were door sales. And if there was, again, if there was revenue that was generated, where did that go? Did it go back to the parks budget, or did it go into the general fund? And on that note, were there expenses that were incurred? Because I know that there was some conversation during a couple of meetings prior that, you know, maintenance, grounds repair, trash, those type of things. And I just didn't know if we had incurred any expenses from the circus. And then the follow-up to that is, I'm on a committee that works with Public Works at the dump, and I know that there was a great plethora of metal that was on the side that was picked up, and I didn't know if that was sold, if there was some sort of a barter agreement between Sanitation Solutions and West Tawsoni, and whether there was any revenue that was generated from that. And if so, where did that go? And my email, or I'd be happy, my phone number's on there, I'd be happy to give you my email, but if it's something that maybe we could speak to, and again, some sort of a message from the city, that'd be great.
I would make the same suggestion as we did to Mr. Bob. If you would get with Kim, I mean, everything in the city is public record. So if you would come up and get with Kim, you could start there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. So we don't have any other citizens input that I'm aware of, related or non-related agenda items. So we're gonna move on to number six, which is our consent agenda items. Does anybody have any questions about those? I do have, I do have something I want to share. Everybody had another profit and loss statement that was, if you'll look at the top right corner, it was printed at 2:49 PM today. I asked them to print that and give everybody a copy of it. I came up Monday afternoon, we received our packets. I wasn't in town, so I don't think I got mine until Saturday, but I think everybody else probably got theirs Friday evening. But if you're looking at the profit and loss statement, I'll just show y'all kind of, it can give you an example of the reason why you have another one. So I went through and found some things that I had some questions about and came up and talked to Kim about them. She got with Mary, and Mary went in. And it was basically like some rock that was supposed to be, you know, it just got applied wrong. Things like that. There was some questions I had about some security bills. There was different things. And I asked the questions. Mary quickly dug into it, I guess, Monday afternoon, and found what was going on where and was able to rectify it. And the rectification of all of it is in this report to kind of straighten things out. Just wanted to make sure y'all knew why that was in your spot.
Didn't bring it up, but...
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Amanda, you could probably answer since you're the court clerk. Not trying to put you on the spot here. But, you know, we get a report from you every month on all the courts. And the total that's on those, that's a monthly total, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's not, that's not your, that's what we've done so far this year.
Monthly.
Okay, okay. And I probably should have asked this probably a long time ago, but this is what the city keeps, correct? And this is what the state takes, correct? Is that what I'm reading here? I've never really asked a question about municipal courts, though.
You've had to do.
And I've just, I've always thought about it, but forget it. It's on your monthly tax.
Yes, that's what we take. The first columns are ours, second one's what the state gets.
Okay.
And then the third one is our collection fee agency that we got. That's where it goes to them.
Right. Okay. So so far, we've collected $15,947, right? If I'm reading it right?
Yes.
That's what the, oh, that was from December 1st, at least it was 31st, so we're still... Okay, I got you.
Okay.
And keep in mind, we just started with that service.
Right.
That's gonna start doing some of the back stuff, too.
Good job.
We might start seeing something there.
Yeah. Good job, Amanda.
Let's see. Now, I don't remember. I think it was in conversation right at the beginning of the meeting, but, and we did have a report last month, you guys remember, that was like all jacked up? And so I brought that up after I seen the agenda also on Monday, that we didn't put that on there. So that was November's P and L that was all messed. Is that right? Yes.
Yes.
That was November's P and L that was all messed up. So we should have had that on this agenda to be approved. So hopefully, we can all remember and have it in notes to be approved in the next month's meeting. So in reality, our financial report for November has not still been approved by us as council. But I did ask that we have that on our council meeting next month. I don't think it's gonna get thrown into like the beginning of one of our workshops or nothing. It could be, I guess. In theory, it could be, but I don't know. I guess we'll have to see what the mayor, indoor Kim, does on that. So and the only other thing that I don't think we have at all is G, Public Works Report for December. There wasn't one in our packet, and we don't have one here. I think Michael's out sick. So he went home, I think, yesterday sick. So we don't have that. So I just want to make sure that it's out there and we all realize it. It said that we don't have G, 6G, the Public Works Report. And then we should have for November, financial report, that should be on our next agenda, regular agenda item. Any other questions or comments or anything on the consent agenda items?
To make the motion, we approve the consent agenda items minus G.
All in favor?
Leon Myers.
Kevin Featherstone.
Jack O'Connell.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
Motion made by Chris Burkett, seconded by Leon, or Robin Myers. All in favor? All right, so we'll move on to seven, Old Business. This is actually pretty exciting to me.
I'm also excited.
I mean, we got a lot of applicants, too, which is kind of cool. So this is talking about the Park Board discussing indoor take action for the Park Board Committee members. And we did receive, I forget how many it was, seven or eight? I don't remember the corners, but somebody in the chair, open up for any discussion or questions or comments or...
Not knowing how this works, we had applicants. Have we taken the steps of doing background checks on these? What was our next step on this when we initially started the process? Do you recall?
I don't know if we ever talked about a background check. Do you guys?
I know it was part of the application process, but I don't know if it actually happened.
That would probably be a Kim question.
I would think you should do a background check after you approve them.
Right, yeah.
And then the approval is based on whether or not they pass the background.
Yeah, I agree.
That way, we don't spend a bunch of money on somebody that might drop out, might, you know.
I personally agree with you. I mean, it's just like employees. Until you decide that you're gonna hire them, you don't fill that step, right? But yeah, I mean, I'm sure that there will be one. I don't think we've discussed that we're gonna do them before they come to council. I think at this point, we would all, as council, start deciding what we're thinking or what our suggestions are as far as approving some of these folks. And you guys, excuse me, because I don't remember. Did we say we were gonna do seven? Do you remember?
Seven.
Seven, right?
I think that was them.
Yes.
Was it seven?
I don't think that board or committee or whatever, that's ever been said. I mean, that would, that would be the council's decision, to be honest. I mean...
I'm thinking the original one, it was set up, it was seven.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, was it was seven. Chairs open. Anybody got anything to say about it? Suggestions, thoughts?
I think the thing I kind of like just looking through these is that there's kind of a mixed, a mixture of different applicants, especially, and that they don't live in West Tawsoni, but they're willing to come here and want to serve on this board. I mean, I give them praise for wanting to do that. I wish we could have more people from West Tawsoni that wanted to do it. But if they're willing, you know, if they're willing to do that, I think it's great.
It's been a period of time. Do we need to call and see if these people might still be interested?
I don't disagree. It has been.
I certainly can make calls if someone needs to make calls.
Do we want to make calls and then schedule a workshop?
They need a special session.
We need a special session to bring this back up? I mean, you know, I agree. I understand the timeframe, too.
And it's gonna be important, whether it's a board or a committee, to get resolutions.
Right, I mean, and...
We have to decide that.
Right, and again, the council just needs to decide that, you know? As the council, we need to decide.
Can we do that to not decide whether we want to...
I think the way it's written, I mean, I guess that's neither here nor there, whether we want to say we did or not.
I don't know that it would matter.
Pam, you actually gave me some paper, and I did not bring that with me here tonight. I'll be honest. I didn't even think about it.
So what does everybody think about, we can call a special session meeting if we want to, and not call a workshop, call a special session meeting where we can put this on an agenda and...
And get this done.
Yeah, get it done. I would rather see that than a workshop, than we're not making a decision in a workshop.
We're on meeting for the Facebook thing next week.
Yeah, we're having a Facebook thing next Tuesday night. Could we just...
It's on the 16th. We have the Facebook workshop starting at 6:30. Did we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. That'll be the 16th.
Can we say an hour and a half?
One hour.
One hour.
Okay, then good. I messed my calendar up. Golly, that's weird that we would have slated that for an hour and a half. So do we want to say at 7:30 on the 16th that we...
I'm good with that. We'll already be here. It shouldn't take 30 minutes when you push through it.
That's just for special...
And I will, just so you guys have heads up, we have a first reading and two ordinances tonight. The plan was to do the second reading on next Tuesday for the ordinances.
Just tell them to bring pizza.
I mean, I can make it worse. I already started on February 1st.
I was taking lobster, man.
Lobster?
Are we gonna have questions, just quickly? So your workshop that you're gonna be having regarding this committee board, is it to decide that, or is it to... Or is it to decide the scope of what this group, this body is gonna do?
The special meeting would be for the scope of the body, if it's a committee, if it's a board, what it is. And to, I guess officially created, is that what we're doing? But there's a workshop.
It's unrelated.
It's unrelated right before it, for Facebook.
Right, right, right. I'm talking about the park board. So that, that meeting is to discuss the full scope and responsibilities as far as this board goes.
Then would, then would allow us to start preparing the ordinance, like, yeah.
Yes.
Ordinance to support that within our city.
Okay, and the contact, as far as contacting those individuals who submitted applications, is that gonna be done prior to or post? Would they have an?
I assume if we could do it prior to, that.
Well, that they could actually hold on today.
I, ideally, if appropriate, and everyone's okay with me calling, I would prefer to do it before that meeting. Okay, thank you. And just at least know what our numbers are.
So make the motion to table this until that meeting.
Make a motion to allow your council member to contact everybody ahead of time and then to have a special meeting.
Okay, so make a motion to have Jack contact to see who is still interested.
Yes.
Table the, the appointing members until the workshop on the sixteenth.
Special session.
Special session.
Oh, you don't have to take, table any sort of actions as regard to the call, because your action right now is contacting.
Right, you're, you're, you're making, you're making a motion.
A motion to have Jack contact the applicants to see who's still interested.
And also have a special session meeting.
Y'all can just call that, though.
Okay, just call it, okay. All right, I second that motion. All in favor?
Yeah, I'm not.
Kevin Featherstone?
Robin Myers.
Yeah, I don't know if I can vote on that.
Yeah, you can.
I agreed to call.
So, the motion made by Chris Burkett, seconded by me, and all in favor? All right, so we're gonna move on to new business. So new business is discussion and or take action to approve the first reading of ordinance number three-one-zero-dash-zero-one-dash-one-six-dash-two-zero-two-four. So this ordinance is for the city of West Waukeganee to provide new water and sewer rates, water deposits. We, we talked about this, I mean, it's not, not necessarily that I have to read all these, and I know of.
I think you should.
Well, someone just don't always think about. Anyway, so this is about our water rates, and this is the first reading. Now, I will say this, our public works director is not here tonight, so I don't know if any of y'all have any questions that would be pertinent for him to answer. I know we've all, we've talked about this pretty extensively, I think we had a workshop about it. We've, we've done several things. Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns, suggestions?
I've got all my questions answered.
Whatever it is. Anything, anything to say towards it, or are we just gonna?
I hate that we have to do this, but, but there is a necessity in it, because of cost of supplies and, and, you know, whatever we have to have in order to keep our city's water, uh, plant and what have you functioning. So, you know, we, unfortunately, we do have to pass that on, and I'm a citizen too, so we all have to, we're all gonna bear the brunt of it, feel the sting.
I was exactly gonna say what you just said. I wanna urge everybody that, you know, is in this room and everybody that's watching us here, I wanna urge everybody to understand and realize that, look, we're all citizens of this city too. So what we're talking about, these water rates and, and everything, it affects us as well. I mean, it's, I mean, we, we don't, we don't get any special privilege or benefit because we're on the council. I mean, it's, our water bill's gonna be the same as everybody else's, um, reflective of where you live, so. This is the first reading, we had the second reading, I don't know if this is the one she was talking about throwing in on that, uh, or not?
Yeah.
So.
Yes, next week, Kevin.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so. Chair, hand, hand motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, three-one-zero-one-one-six-two-zero-two-four.
I'll second it. Motion made by Jack, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
Leon Myers.
Kevin Featherstone?
Jack O'Connell.
Robin Myers.
Chris Burkett.
None opposed. So we will move on to. H B, discussion and or take action to approve first reading of ordinance number three-one-one-dash-zero-one-dash-one-six-dash-twenty-twenty-four. This ordinance is amended in chapter ten, section of one dot B of the code ordinance of the city of West Waukeganee to provide new water and sewer rates. I didn't, already did that?
Did that one.
No, it's companion ordinance.
It's a companion, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's a different ordinance, I'm not.
Yeah, but the first one is all the sections except for B and the section.
Yeah.
So this, for a minute, I'm thinking, okay, I remember reading this, but something was different. So this is the servability, servability clause providing for an effective date, so that's the part of that. So anybody got any questions on that ordinance?
How far did we say we were going back?
Going back.
For the, the delinquency, um, gentleman that was here.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
For your questions.
Oh, we didn't say. That's, you said we go back to four years, so that's not the same.
No, that's not the.
It's not the same. Oh, I'm not, we're not on C?
No.
No, we're on B.
Oh, sorry. I skipped the page.
The way they continue, it continued to the second page, there's barely a little bit of it on the first page.
Yeah.
Now, this is, this kinda, this goes hand in hand with the water rates.
One of them is inside rates and one of them is outside rates.
Yeah.
So read B would be.
Right.
Outside, I think.
Three ten is inside, three eleven is outside.
Yes.
That's right. If there's no discussion.
I make the motion with three-three-eleven, oh-one, dash, oh-one, dash, one-six, dash, two-zero-two-four.
I'll second that motion. Leon made the motion, I seconded, all in favor?
Leon Myers.
Kevin Featherstone?
Jack O'Connell.
Chris Burkett.
None opposed. All right, now we'll go to H C, discussion and or take action to approve first reading of ordinance number three-twelve-dash-zero-one-dash-one-six-dash-twenty-twenty-four. Uh, this ordinance is providing collection fees for the delinquent utility bills, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, my question.
And I think. I think we said four years.
That's fine.
I think that, that's as far as they'll go back, it's four years.
Right, but I think we said, yeah, that's fine, because there was no difference in charge, blah, 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 yada, yada. So it's four years, hopefully, that, that was your question, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Chair, unturned a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number three-one-two-dash-zero-one-dash-one-six-dash-two-zero-two-four